I really enjoy sports.
Yeah.
Right, Sultan number thirty-three.
Please rise.
Please remember tonight, a couple individuals, John Gove, who did a lot of work at the Emma Andrews Library, and also a man I knew very, very well, Francis Paster Dunhill, who did a lot of work for City and also was a head of the Housing Authority for many, many years. Thank you.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Council of the World Hall for City Council meeting was September twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen. Happy to be here, Mr. President. Councilor Hershaw.
Here.
Councilor Kinsey.
Here.
Councilor Tontow.
Here.
Councilor Vogel.
Here.
Councilor Cameron.
Present.
Councilor Conlon.
Present.
Councilor Conlon Cronin.
Present.
Councilor Ideman.
Here.
Councilor Jinta.
Present.
Councilor Harquist. Abasing from Council President O'Brien.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. President. Late file item. Councilors will see on their desk, there is a late-file item, which is the special event road race called River Relay for Real Lives. There is also the mayor's update.
Motion to waive the rules, so these late-file items can be accepted.
President. All favor? All. Both? One public comment? About twenty-three people have signed up, most of them for the dog park, which we've discussed many, many times in this chamber, so try to keep your... This will be referred to committee, so you have two more chances to also speak on this, so try to keep your comments short, hopefully. We'll begin with Rob Steach.
Mr. O'Brien, councilors, good evening. I am Rob Steach, the new Animal Control Officer. Here, say hi. It's been an interesting three weeks so far, but everything's been very... Everything's been great, everybody's been accommodating, I've enjoyed my time here as a deputy of the city.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I'm going to answer for you.
That's right. Glad to hear. No, but we'll get a hold of you.
I am as well. Well, like I said, thank you, and I appreciate my time here so far, and look forward to the long future.
Thank you. No, no, that's a go. There's not a public comment here. This is it. Thank you. Harold Butroy?
Good evening, I'm Harold Butroy, I'm on the Razor's Edge at the corner of Olive and Merrimack Street. I emailed to the councilor about the parking on... Right by the Olive, she said, of the Razor's Edge. I've been there for forty-eight years, and I have handicapped people that use that particular spot. I have three gentlemen that have dementia, and they cannot use my parking lot, because unfortunately, they can't get from the parking lot to my front door without being confused. So I usually go out and try to get them in, and their wives usually take the space on Olive Street. I realize there is a problem there, and I realize that I didn't talk to Mr. Conlon by email. I'm not very good at email, I'll be honest, I'm not very good at it. But in the forty-eight years I've been there, I thought it was fairly decent. I think the one drawback was when they had... They took away that crosswalk that went from my shop to across the street. When they took that away, the car seemed to move down further. When the crosswalk was there, it was much more effective, I think. People slowed down, they did ease out onto Merrimack Street. I realize that there has been a couple of accidents, but I don't know if they were... I don't know that much about them, but I do use that handicap... I use that as for my dementia clients that come into my shop. I go out to the car and get them and bring them in. One is blind, and his wife has... She's crippled, so she can't get out of the car, so I do use that spot. And Mr. Cronin suggested that we put handicap on Merrimack Street, but I think that's kind of dangerous. Maybe they could do that where on the Olive Street side. I don't know, I'm not very good at these things, but I do appreciate what Mr. Cronin's done, and, you know, I'm not here to criticize everybody, you know, but I don't think that will... For me, and for some of my clients, I don't think it will work. I know I've been there for forty-eight years, and I don't know what else to say, but thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Wilbur Shank?
President O'Brien and councilors, my name is Wilbur Shank. I reside at One Beck Street in Newburyport. Thank you for your consideration for my appointment to the Waterfront Trust. My wife and I moved to Newburyport a little over five years ago, and we spent most of our working lives out in northeastern Ohio, outside of Cleveland. My background is engineering, I've been in the manufacturing business my whole career, working with composite materials, fiberglass materials, if you will. While we lived and worked in northeastern Ohio, I was volunteered for a number of different organizations, a local, the Ashtruda Art Center. I was active in the community township government, I was on the zoning commission, and served on their strategic plan committee. I was also appointed to an advisory committee at Bowling Green State University in the marketing department, and did a fair amount of fundraising for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the Holden Arboretum. Since moving to Newburyport, I've become involved with the Anna Jakes Hospital. I've been a corporator for a little over three years now, and was just recently appointed to the Board Quality Committee. I'm also working on a committee, a small committee, to try to improve the patient access process for the laboratory. I happen to believe that the waterfront in Newburyport is one of the greatest assets that this community has. It was a very important item or factor, if you will, in determining where my wife and I would retire. We have a boat on the river, we enjoy the waterfront, I want to say immensely. So, in summary, I think my industrial experience, my volunteer experience in various civic organizations will make me an effective member of the Waterfront Trust. I can tell you I will work hard to maintain and improve the waterfront park, and I will work hard to try to have more of the various committees, various groups along the waterfront work together, because I believe that's important, and I think we can do better than we have been doing in the past, from what I hear. Thank you, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Richard Corsetti?
Thank you, Mr. President, and City Councilor. My name is Richard Corsetti, I'm at One Twenty-Six at Merrimack Street, Unit Twenty-Nine. I go to the Dog Park, or Cashman Park, for the shared use at least twice a day. I also walk my dog another time during the day while she's on leash. We've enjoyed that park immensely, it was one of the reasons that we elected to move into the area that we're at. We were completely and totally blindsided by this incident. We had no prior warning, we didn't know that there were any violations. We still don't know what exactly the violations are. There was no presence of animal control. I've been going there, I moved in last July, I've been going there since then. I saw the prior Animal Control Officer once. And I think the folks here will tell you that I'm there all the time. We just completely and totally enjoy that place. There has to be a solution to improve the way this thing is governed. One day, I'm walking across the field with my dog on a leash, and there's a dog off-leash... This is like one o'clock in the afternoon. There's a dog off-leash coming right at me, and looking very aggressive. So I went over to one of the poles where the signage is, and I copied that phone number down, and I called in a complaint. What do you think happened? Absolutely nothing. I got an answering machine, and I was told to leave a message, and I would get a call back. I don't know how you dispatch animal control, but it's a problem. It has to be corrected. The new Animal Control Officer has been there at least twice that I know, possibly more, so we're looking forward to working with him. There's one other thing I'd like to say, and if there's a subcommittee that's appointed, I would strongly recommend that someone who frequents the Dog Park... And I'm not sure, I don't care who it is, and I'm not volunteering for that, but I would be happy to do it, but if there is a subcommittee...
Time's up. Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll give... There'll be more opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Good evening, members of the City Council. Rob German, Arrow Two Action. I just want to speak briefly on the Dog Park. I happen to be an avid user, I have two dogs, George and Stella, and I just want to let you know how much I appreciate the Dog Park. I found all the dog owners to be very respectful when it comes to picking up dog waste, and for the most part, I really don't see any issues down there. Again, I'm in that park almost every single day, and Mr. Corsetti's dog Rosie happens to be one of the nicest dogs down there, so I would really appreciate it if we could keep the Dog Park like it is, or possibly improve it, and I don't know what that improvement is, but if anyone's going to speak negative tonight, I would like to let you know that I very much appreciate that park and the city, and we're very lucky to have it, so thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Bill Jaras?
President, City Council, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Bill Jaras, I live at Five Beck Street in Newburyport. I moved to Newburyport about a year ago, and I've been taken... For the last three months, I've been taking my two golden retrievers to Cashman Park. And being new, I don't want to try to tell you people how to run anything, what to vote for, what to consider, anything like that, but I would like to say what I've observed there, what I see there, okay? I see dogs running and playing and doing what dogs do. And, believe me, they don't come close to warrant being called a Dog Park, okay? I see owners approaching other owners whose dogs are not behaving correctly, and they ask them to please leash their dog. In other words, we're patrolling ourselves. I see owners picking up dog do that someone else has left there accidentally. And I saw an owner carrying a bag of dirt from their car, and what she did was fill a hole that some other dog had dug. So we're trying to maintain the park the best way we can. So, I see a park that dog owners deeply appreciate, and do what they do, do what they can to keep it a nice place for everyone. In summary, people socialize there, dogs socialize, and dogs come home happy and tired. It's called the good life. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Markwell, Twenty-Four Charles Street.
Hi, everybody. My name is Erica Markwell, and I live close to downtown Newburyport. I wrote it all down, okay. Eleven years ago, I had really bad ovarian cancer, and then I died. I thought I was okay, but this spring, I got the diagnosis of different cancer. I'm often very tired, and not able to take my dog for a long walk. I'm glad my dog has a place to run around off the leash, and she got accepted now in the park. I will take good care of him, so he doesn't bother people. Most of the days, the dog playground is for people. Those of you who come for solitude should come then, or go somewhere else along the river. You all have the choice. I don't know what will happen to me in the next few months, but to us, all people who live alone, our dogs are very important to us. They are not dogs, they are companions. Thank you.
Karen Popkin?
Hi, I'm Karen Popkin. I live on Boardman Street. I'm also a member of the Parks Commission. I am in disagreement with the Parks Commission's statement that the off-leash area at Cashman is not working. This conclusion was drawn from a few complaints directed to the Parks Director. Some of those complaints contained gross misinformation and exaggerations. One such complaint contained the fantastical quote, "Packs of dogs are running all night." There was no communication with the Health Department, nor the Animal Control Officer. There was no investigation, no stepping up of controls, no education for users, no dialogue with the City Council, the public, and other members of the Parks Commission, such as myself. The topic was inserted on the Parks Commission's September meeting without prior advance notice. Three out of five Parks Commission members drew the conclusion that off-leash is not working. I profoundly disagree. The success of the off-leash program was supported by real data collected during the pilot program phase, not by a handful of anecdotal comments. Off-leash shared usage is a benefit to the community, as we have heard and seen this evening. Specific hours were designated so that park owners and non-dog owners could use and enjoy Cashman Park. I implore you to make any decisions fact-based, not drawn by the complaints from a few squeaky wheels with a personal agenda. The parks, which are perhaps Newburyport's greatest asset, should continue to be enjoyed by everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Debra Warren?
Thank you all for listening to me. My name is Debra Warren Major, I'm also a commissioner of the Mosley Woods Park. Closing Cashman Park would place an additional burden on my park, because we would have more dogs there, particularly in the winter when Mahers Hill is closed. We would be policing a larger number of dogs in a smaller area, and once again, we have not seen any Animal Control Officers up there in a number of months. Secondly, first of all, I would like to submit that Council Cronin recused himself from further discussions due to his personal interest in this matter as a direct abbot to the Dog Park. Secondly, I have quotes for a four-foot-high fence, with a four-foot gate for $2,450. We've already raised thirty-three percent of the money. The fence would go from the tennis court fence over to the bushes. It would have a sign on it that says, "Dogs have to have a lead on when leaving this gate, dogs on lead crossing path." To say that fences wouldn't be aesthetic... We have the tennis court, which has a twelve-to-fifteen-foot-high fence around it, and it's not aesthetic-looking at all, and that's a double court. We have a basketball court, that's not very aesthetic-looking with regulation length. And then we have the poles with the basketball hoops on it, and that's regulation height, that's not very aesthetically pleasing. A four-foot-high fence that you can see through would allow viewers to actually see into the river and see the sailboats, whereas if you had a solid fence, you would not... You would lose and chop off an entire portion of that, of the river. I also happen to be a landscape designer, so that's that. I've never been made aware of any problems in the Dog Park. No official has advised or put the dog owners on notice of a problem. We should be discussing problems amongst us, rather than just closing the park. I do pay taxes.
Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Yates?
So, good evening, everybody, and thank you for the chance to speak.
Where do you live, Kevin?
Sorry?
Where do you live?
I live in Amesbury.
Yeah, I know it's Main Street. We don't have a Main Street in Newburyport, so I figured that out.
I live in Amesbury. I speak to you as a British man, this is my first time in such an elite setting, and as a British man, that is going to tell you that I'm a dog lover right from the get-go. And I just want to say how important that park is to me, but even more so to my wife. I will go there once a week, my wife, at least once a day, often twice a day, with our dog Plum. And we've enjoyed that facility, we've enjoyed that park tremendously. And what I have seen is not only dogs socializing, but people, like me, socializing. We've been in this area some three years, and it's been a great opportunity for us to get to meet other people and enjoy their company. So, I would be sad, my wife would be disappointed. That's all I have to say, and I thank you for the opportunity to say it.
Thank you. Thank you. Buddy Bossick? Buddy? Pam Pearson?
Mr. President, councilmembers, Pam Pearson, I reside at One Pop Crowley Way, which is an abutting residence to Cashman Park and the Dog Park. So I thought you might be interested in hearing the perspective from an abutting owner and resident of the Dog Park. I work from home twenty-four-seven, so I get to see what's going on there all the time. And one of the things that I'm amazed is when it's Dog Park hours, how actually civilized it is, to see a large number of dogs playing and people socializing. You know, when we talk about community parks, as the gentleman just said, it really is about community. People go there in the morning, they go there with their coffee, they recognize each other, they enjoy each other's company. A lot of times, the dogs aren't even more than ten feet away from their owners, they're playing at their feet, they love to be near their owners. When the Dog Park is not Dog Park hours, that park is empty, which tells me that it's a really good use for that space from a multi-purpose park. Right next to it, you have tennis courts, basketball courts, you have a children's playground, you have a softball field, and then you have an open field. So when there's no dogs in there, there isn't anything happening. So it's a really good use for it. One of the things that I noticed is, I was there about a year and a half ago, and it's really hard to tell what the rules are. You have a sign that's about the size, double size of this on a pole that's not near the entrance. So perhaps some suggestions could be to make the rules clearer, to post larger signs that you can actually read from a distance with the rules and regulations of the park. The other thing that it says on there is, it specifies non-use of the basketball courts, the tennis courts. It doesn't say anything about crossing the sidewalk or the river. So nobody would actually be aware of that, that that was against the rules. So I think clarification of rules, larger rule signs, boundary signs, would be a better solution than an extreme solution in the way of closing the park, which seems to attract community, which is a purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Lindsay Ogilvy?
My name's Lindsay Ogilvy, I live at Forty-Four One Street, and I'm just here to support the Dog Park.
Johanna Lynch?
Hi, I'm Johanna Lynch, I live at Six Tennis Court in Newbury. And I bring my Irish Wolfhound down to the Dog Park every morning. If I don't get ready to go by seven-thirty, he starts to howl at me. It's his way of socializing. And not only does the dogs need to socialize with people besides other dogs, a dog that's constantly kept on a leash becomes a more aggressive dog to everyone around. So if you're walking your dog downtown, and that dog's not used to people handling him or other dogs, then you've got a problem. The other thing I'd like to say is, I think this is more of a people problem than a dog problem. I think that someone was very rude to a few people, and that has caused an issue. But I haven't heard that the dogs themselves were rude. I think it's more of a people problem. So if we could ban a few people, or put them in a certain area with the dogs at the park, I think we'd be okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I thought it was a horse.
I'm John Lynch, that's my wife, but I don't apologize for her. I live in Newbury, I lived in Newburyport for fifteen years. Now Cashman Park is a wonderful vehicle for socialization. If we worry about Cashman Park because there's a bad dog, I guarantee you there's more bad dog owners than bad dogs. Number two, we'll be closing the rail trail because somebody did drugs there? We'll be closing every restaurant bar because somebody got drunk there? This is crazy. We're wasting our time. You have a wonderful facility that's taken care of. I think the young woman who said, "Better notifications, rules," would be much welcomed. The people there, they self-administer their own rules from the point of view, you get a dog there, it gets a little rowdy, they're told, "Put the leash on him and get out." That's what happens there. The people there are wonderful. I go to the... I walk the rail trail six days a week. Thank you, Newburyport, for allowing me to do that. I don't pay taxes here anymore. I paid enough in the old days. But in all fairness, you have wonderful facilities here. Let them work. Just keep them working like they are. Don't go crazy and start to create every rule that you need. You can't have brown-spotted dogs there. You can have big dogs, but you can't have gay dogs. We can over-administer this thing. You have a wonderful program, it works beautifully. It's crowded there when the dogs are there, there's nobody... You go to the other places, the basketball courts, they're not used that much. So keep that in mind, I appreciate your consideration, and thank you, Newburyport, for putting that together. It's really a wonderful thing.
Lot from... Can't read the last info, Marley?
Good evening. My name is Mark Marwood, I live on Plum Island.
Newbury, Newbury?
Newbury. I'm here also to speak for my granddaughter, who is eight years old, and attends River Valley Child's School. About four years ago, we started going over to Cashman's Park after school, and then the dogs would come, and she would get a chance to go over. And on occasion, she was very shy about dogs, she'd pet a couple. Now she's one of the gang. She goes over, she knows most of the dogs by name. Her particular favorite is Shannon. She gets to play with the dogs, she gets to the throwing stick to throw the ball. She enjoys her afternoon at the Dog Park. I have never seen anything that would cause me to believe that Dog Park shouldn't be open. I also believe it should be extended to the edge of the river, because there are water dogs, and that is one of the few places you can get near the water. My town has banned people from having dogs near the water for six months of the year. I also believe it's a problem in the Newburyport and over the island. One of the reasons we don't have our own personal dog to take to play. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia Dupra, Fifteen Oakland Street?
Sorry, Claudia Dupra, Fifteen Oakland Street, I didn't come dressed properly. Sorry, because I work all day and I ran. But I'm here in the name of my two dogs, and I also never saw any problem with dogs attacking people in the park, in the Dog Park. with dogs attacking people in the park, in the Dog Park. I think it's a very good policy to have that park, and I think we should keep it.
Thank you. Thank you. Bob Thompson.
Hi, I'm Bob Thompson. I'm Claudia's husband. I don't apologize for the word. So, I've been in Newbury Port since '78 and living on Oakland Street since 1991. We have two dogs, the older of which is 12 years old, and we go to the park. It's very much a community. We relate to the dogs and to other people. We look after the other dogs to make sure they're doing what they should be doing, and we share that with the owners. I suspect a lot of the complaints, well, I don't know what all the complaints are, but I suspect it's anecdotal. I would think that the way to approach something like this is to have the dog officer to make frequent trips to the Dog Park and gather the information about how it's being used and what the problems are, and then report based on that observation. Now, that gives us a professional view of how the Dog Park's being run, and then to act on that as opposed to use some kind of an individual anecdotal type of approach to the situation. Thank you.
Peter Macklin.
Good evening. My name's Peter Macklin, 13 Prospect Road. I'm a new resident here in Newbury Port. When we read about the town, and we've been here several times, having come from New England, I read that there was 17,000, 18,000 people and 3,000 dogs. And I thought, and there was very much a reason why I thought this was a great place to move, because we have a dog. And when I came here, I was kind of disappointed that the Dog Parks weren't enclosed, quite frankly, not for the protection of the public, but for the protection of the dogs, so they don't run out in the street or run in the woods or whatever. And so, I was a little surprised. I came from Scottsdale, Arizona, where all the Dog Parks were enclosed and divided, big dogs, little dogs, and so forth, and rotated, so the grounds would be nice. I was offended tonight when I read the newspaper today that there were packs of dogs. It's as if they're wild animals chasing down game or hunting. There's no more packs of dogs, in my experience here, after going to this park and other parks for three months. Then there's packs of kids running around playgrounds or packs of adults running down the street, okay? These dogs are having fun. I've never seen more than four running together at the same time, and they're playing. They're usually chasing a ball or chasing each other. The behavior of the people is, and the community in that Dog Park is something to be admired. And I like to go there. I'm impressed with the people I meet and the behavior of the dogs. Everyone polices not only the grounds, they police the dogs, and they police each other. And I hope, as the young lady here said earlier, that whatever decision or whatever goes forward is fact-based. When one person makes a complaint based on a particular perception they have, and it's not fact-based, and you make a decision off of that, you're making a mistake. So, I appreciate your attention to this, and let the people who use it have a greater say in how it's managed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Holly Mazer.
I'm actually Dave Mazer. I'm speaking up at F. Holly. She's a little under the weather. We live on 6 Butler Street with two other members of our family, Hank and Joey, the Bulldog and the Yorkie Poop. I want to stress how much we appreciate the park, love it every day. My wife's there every day, our dogs are there every day. And the lack of Cashman would, again, put such a strain on the other parks, not only because of the lack of space in the other parks, parking in Mosley and being on a main street at March Hill, but the social aspect as well. There's a much better sense of community at Cashman. We've been here for seven years. And being a 20-something in Newbury Port and not being from here, there's very few places to meet people. The Dog Park gives us that venue, and we appreciate it and would miss it greatly if it were not there. I think a fence would be very effective, but it's also great the way it is now if money isn't issued. Thanks.
Thank you. Question, Penny.
I'm not new to the city, but I am new to the Dog Park. I've been coming here since the last few months, and I just wanted to give my support to the Dog Park. I started thinking today, I've been involved in youth sports here for 30 years, and I'm like, if we're going to throw a few dogs out of the park, what's next? We're going to stop the kids from bouncing basketballs or playing softball or baseball? I mean, I haven't went to say anything. I can't believe how the people at the park cooperate each other. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone from 1 and 1/2 Franklin Street, can't read the right.
Hi, my name is Johanna Corst. I live at 1 and 1/2 Franklin. I just wanted to officially say a sincere thank you to the Public Safety Committee and the City Council and the Traffic Advisory Committee for their work on the Franklin Street parking ban issue. I know it's been a long road and a bit of a nightmare, but I just greatly appreciate your time and effort, and I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for public comment. May I ask comment?
Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the City Council. I'll try to be brief in my update tonight, but there is a lot to share with you. First, I would like to thank the City Councilor, School Committee members, and members of the Brestin Hand School for a wonderful ribbon cutting that we had today to officially open the school. Treasurer Grossman was there as the president, as the overseer of the Mass School Building Authority, Jack McCarthy, the executive director, Representative Costello, Senator Ives, and it just was a really wonderful event, and I thank all for their planning and their efforts for that. There continues to be a desire on the part of the community that I'm hearing to have tours of this new beautiful school, and it's obviously not possible while the children are in school. But the school will be open for voting on November 4th, and children won't be there. So, parents have volunteered to give tours. So, we will get the word out, anyone who is interested in taking a tour of the Brestin Hand School, it will be opened all day during voting on November 4th. We know that we continue to have traffic issues that we have brought back. The traffic engineer, who has worked with us on the project, the abutters in the neighborhoods are having concerns about parking, and some parents not complying with the procedures that have been established for drop-off and pickup of the children. I know our ward councils are working on that with the neighbors too, and we will continue to address those issues and finally get these issues corrected as we continue to move forward. Not only continues to move forward, I'll bet slowly, but we are making progress. We've had some very, very challenging issues there with a phased-in project, but we are moving forward and anticipate, hopefully by the end of October, to be having a ribbon-cutting and open house on that site. I am pleased to announce that the Castania Construction has started work on our senior community center, and that on October 9th at 9:30 in the morning, we will have our official groundbreaking ceremony, and we'll be going over to the art room on the first floor of the Brestin Hand School for a little reception post, which will be the first time that we are bringing our senior and children together for an event, which I hope will be many as the center is completed on or around August 1st. Plum Island Water and Sewer. This has been a long and difficult challenge for the city as we move forward, working with legal teams. And one of the latest issues has been the difficulty in CDM Smith obtaining all the materials they need for to begin the repairs. We have received, we had a technical meeting last Friday, and we also had word from CDM Smith. They anticipate all materials onsite by Wednesday. But I am still reluctant to announce another start date. That will not happen until we are absolutely 100% sure that the sub DNC construction, CDM Smith, is onsite, and we're beginning to repair the 16 hydrants. Again, the goal is to work in different elevations across the island so that we can assess the condition of all the metals and parts, replace and repair where needed all the hydrants, send out materials to the lab, and really get a better understanding of the extent of the problems out on Plum Island Water and Sewer. Just reminding you, tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at the Media Library Center at the high school, a little change in venue that would be helpful for all of us, where the City Planning Department, NRA, and City Council will have a roundtable. I gave you a draft agenda. There still is time. If you would like to make changes to that agenda or add anything else to it, please be sure to let me or Andy Port, the Director of Planning, know, and we'll be sure to have that on the agenda for tomorrow night. Just a reminder, this is a meeting for the NRA, the City Council, and planning, and that will not be an opportunity for public comment at that meeting. The landfill. Most of you are aware that through correspondence and information that has been shared with our local newspaper, that New Ventures is, has been cited in a contempt action, and it is being heard tomorrow at Superior, Suffolk Superior Court in Boston at 2 o'clock. Myself, our attorney from Couple Minute Page, and our Health Director will be present, and I will provide you updates on the results of that meeting. I did hear through the grapevine that the owner, Billy Tibo, was scrambling over at the site today. The problem has been the players been down, and there's a long list, but we won't go into all of the problems that we've been dealing with for the last 10 years at the landfill. I know that you have before you a summary of our end of fiscal year '14 finances. I applaud our Finance Director, Ethan Manning, and our finance team for their continued quality work in this area. We do have S&amp;P Standard &amp; Poor coming in tomorrow to meet with the city. We had a prep meeting with our financial consultant for Southwest as we begin to go out for final bonds for our school projects, senior community center, and rolling some of our bands over into long-term financing. This is an opportunity for us to showcase the city with them in preparation in a few weeks for a conference call to look at our overall financial picture and whether or not that results in a change in upgrade to our bond status. We'll find out. But it's basically preparing for, they're putting this offering out to the public for purchasing our municipal bonds. Our 250th celebration, we have another event coming up, which is a historic scavenger hunt on October 18th, which will be sponsored by the Institute for Savings. And more details will follow, but we anticipate people and families picking up the scavenger hunt cards, and there'll be vendors on the Bartlett Mall. People will spend the day collecting clues, turning in their cards, and then that will conclude with a pasta supper up here at City Hall, and we will award prizes to the winners. Very pleased to let you know that we had a wonderful turnout last week at a coalition in Ipswich that is coming together to address Chapter 70 funding, which is funding for our schools. Those of us in communities like Newbury Port and Topsfield and Hamilton, Wyndham, Amesbury, et cetera, et cetera, have been struggling with funding our schools because of this antiquated formula that was established in the early 90s referred to as Chapter 70. The legislature in this year's FY '15 budget has put together funding to bring a legislative committee together to look at this, which was supposed to be a temporary funding formula that was established in the early 90s. So, this coalition is hopefully building momentum and will begin to work together and present data and information to this legislative group in hopes that we can make some changes in the funding formula. In addition, one of the greatest challenges that all of the schools have is funding our special ed programs. And we have been meeting monthly with Senator O'Connor-Ives, who has pulled together in her district representative from the schools to talk about what are some of the ways that we can begin to work together to address some of the challenges of special education. In utilities, I am really pleased to finally announce that after three and a half years of grueling work, that the city finally owns our streetlights. So, that we can begin to take care of our own. We will apply for our Green Initiatives Grant to start testing out some lead streetlights, be able to, you know, respond more quickly when they go out, et cetera, et cetera. We also will be implementing the maintenance program with our electrician that I think you approved two years ago that we have yet to implement. So, I'm very, very pleased that that finally is moving forward. In addition, we are continuing to meet with our Stormwater Committee. This is becoming a pressure from the federal government in terms of dealing with stormwater. Last week, we had representatives from Stan Tech come in and do a workshop for us talking about options that we have moving forward as a city to address stormwater. So, there will definitely be more information coming across to the City Council as well as to the residents about the City Council. You had an opportunity to meet our Animal Control Officer, Bob Schedge, tonight. He comes with years and years of experience from Manchester. And I know that there were some comments made tonight that there has been a lack of control, but it's because we didn't have an animal control officer. So, we now have a new Animal Control Officer. I thank all of the residents who came forward tonight to share their opinions about the Dog Park and realizing that it is a really important asset to our community. When I first became mayor, bringing a group of people together to form an ad hoc committee who studied this for a long time, then it went to the City Council again. You vetted this, you worked very hard on this issue for us to establish these three Dog Parks, and I think that there's a lot of solutions out there, and I assume you'll be sending it to committee and begin to work again on how we can make this asset work for the community. I also am very pleased to announce that we have hired a new DPW, Deputy Director for the Department of Public Services. His name is Wade Amaral. He comes to us from 18 years' experience in Cambridge, and he will be starting October 20th, and we'll have an opportunity to do a meet and greet with you because he is, will be, your point person for all, you know, highway plowing, street work, sidewalks, et cetera, that will be happening in the city. I would also be remiss if I didn't share, it's Paul Colby, after 39 years of service to our community, is retiring, and he will be a tremendous loss. He has been in our water department, our water superintendent, and was absolutely instrumental in saving us millions of dollars in the renovation of the water plant. He is extremely shy. He did not want to come and have anything. But we are going to do a small reception here at 9:30 tomorrow for him, if any of the councils are available. If not, I would encourage you, before he retires, to take a moment, and any of the residents too, to thank him for his service to our community. He's a tremendous asset. In terms of the City Council meeting tonight, you have a transfer for you that is in the City Council packet. It was a very unfortunate situation where National Grid, when they were putting in a new gas line for the assisted living on the rental property next to the hospital, despite the fact that they did state they still cut this major fiber optic line. We are working with National Grid to try and get some help in paying this $14,000 emergency through the night fix, but we have an insurance account, and the company, you know, wanted payment on completion of the project, and we are now a month from paying them. So, I encourage you to please pass that transfer tonight, and we will work very hard with National Grid to try and get some help in that reimbursement. City contracts, you have information about the Patrolman's Contract that has been ratified. Again, I commend Peter Lovari, Director of Policy Administration, for his great work in terms of negotiating the contracts in the city. As you can see, they are very consistent with what we've been doing with all the contracts across the city. And in terms of the Waterfront Trust, I would like to encourage your confirmation of Wilbur Shank. You heard from him tonight. As you heard me say a couple times over my updates, I had quite a lot of interest in this open seat on the Waterfront Trust and interviewed probably eight candidates for the seat. But based on Wilbur's background, experience, and his attendance at so many Waterfront Trust, Corporate Commission, and NRA meetings, I believe he is the right person to fill that vacant seat currently. Would also like to report that the Governor has signed the appointment of Auntie Zipper to the NRA as the Governor's seat, and he will be joining us tomorrow night at our joint roundtable. And is it on my update? Any questions? Yes?
Mr. President, just one question regarding the appointment of the animal control officer. How many hours a week is he scheduled to work?
He's full-time.
35 hours a week?
Thirty...
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want the consent agenda?
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for September 8th. There are two transfers. The first transfer is from the Parks Department, Marlowe Gifts to Heritage Trail, local gifts, $3,700. That's in for approval. Second is from the mayor's office, insurance claims to telecommunications, $14,857. That's also in for approval. There are two communications, the police-patrolman tentative agreement, we refer to budget and finance. The second is the auditor's year-end budget report, FY 2014, again to budget and finance. There are 10 appointments. First reading of the first five. Liam McGovern, 21 Marlborough Street, to the planning board until May 31st, 2016, and on the Community Preservation Act Committee until October 1st, 2017. Third is Wilbur Schenk, 1 Beck Street, to the waterfront trust until December 1st, 2018. Fourth is Robert Stich, 185 School Street, Manchester, animal control officer until May 1st, 2015. Fifth is Elizabeth L. Watson, 53 Lawn Street, Unit 315, to the Emma Andrews Library Commission, October 30th, 2015. Next five are reappointments. Anya Reenie-Law, 43 Purchase Street, Emma Andrews, until October 30th, 2015. Susan Chase, 44 Oak Street, Emma Andrews, October 30th, 2015. Elizabeth Valerianni, 29 Oak Street, Emma Andrews, October 30th, 2015. And Donna Conway, 27 Marlborough Street, Emma Andrews, October 30th, 2015. And last, Candy Weiner, 7 Lincoln Street, to the New Report Affordable Housing Trust until September 1st, 2015. And that is the consent agenda.
Those words to the council?
Mr. Chairman, can we pull out the second transfer to discuss it?
Most to approve as amended?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. One to the regular agenda?
That would be the transfer number two, Mr. President.
Yes, it would be.
That would be our reserve appropriation insurance claim, $14,857, to IT telecommunications, same amount.
I just wanted to ask--
A motion for us, move a motion.
Beg your pardon.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Enter argument.
I beg your pardon. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions of Mr. Lombardi, so I understand what exactly happened. So, is the city accepting liability? This is our error that we didn't mark, we didn't mark the right site? Is it 100% liability? Is it partial liability? What happened here?
Yes. Unfortunately, this is, the city is at fault for this. It was installed in the early 2000s, I believe, but it was not properly marked out for DigSafe. This portion of the cable is not covered by our insurance policy because it happened on a public way. If it had happened at the high school here, any other building that's insured on our MIA policy, it would have been covered. But unfortunately, it happened 30 Topps Lane, and we're on the hook for the mistake.
Thank you. A question of Mr. Manning, too. Can you run us very briefly through the process of how a cable like that becomes marked so that it is on the DigSafe maps and we don't make a mistake like this in the future?
Okay, this is not my area of expertise, but my understanding is that, you know, whenever any utility is installed underground, whether it's water, sewer, a cable like this, we're supposed to be notifying DigSafe so that when they do do a markup for a vendor, it gets caught. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case here.
And to follow? And isn't it then entered into our GIS maps so we can identify those?
It normally would be. This cable was an anomaly. It's the only fiber cable that the city owns connecting two of the schools.
So, yes, in an ideal world, it would be on the GIS map.
Let's call it.
Just as a follow-up to those, did DPS put that in, or was it a subcontractor, a cable company contractor hired by the city? And is there any, anything going back on them--
Yep.
--as a cable company?
Peter?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that it was installed by a subcontractor back around 2000. It wasn't installed by city employees. I don't believe that it's on them. I believe DigSafe went to the schools and they didn't identify it.
Let me be, oh, okay. I guess this is to the, to the rest of us, then, that following up on that. I'd like a little more information, just to find out if there's a, if there's some issue with a contractor or whatnot, what the policy is on that.
If I could, I, maybe the colleagues would entertain an amendment where we authorize the transfer and then we direct the mayor's office to investigate that issue and go after the contractor for reimbursement. The only problem is if we, if we go after the contractor first, we could be waiting quite a long time, and I realize we have, it's under, it's under a big rush.
They'll even knock it, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to clarify, I was out on the site immediately after the fiber was cut, and of course, my initial reaction was, what happened to DigSafe? When I got there, they had completed DigSafe and looked at the site. The DigSafe is below the asphalt. This fiber was coming through the asphalt. I thought that was unusual and, you know, probably not exactly the best way to put a major fiber cable for the city, but when this contractor arrived on site and I was back there at, in the early evening to talk to them, he said that's very common for these fiber optic cables to be through the asphalt. I don't necessarily understand why, think it's not safe, but it, somewhere in 2000 to 2002, this should have been included in some mapping on DigSafe. And we don't know, you know, 12 years ago, who was responsible for not putting it on the DigSafe, but it currently is, and I have been in touch with National Grid, and they haven't said no yet in terms of helping us. Their supervisors immediately came out to the site, but they did do the right thing in terms of DigSafe. Somewhere, this wasn't put on a map where it should have been. So at this point, there aren't a lot of contractors who can come out. This was an incredibly difficult repair, and there aren't a lot of contractors we can call to come and do this. I encourage you, please, to pass this tonight. They are waiting for their payment, and we are overdue on this bill, and we can send it out tomorrow. You know, again, this is from insurance money, you know, from other settlements that's sitting in an account, and we really do need to pay this bill, and I will do everything I can to continue to work with National Grid to try and get some reimbursement from them.
Thank you. Let's call it. Or from the original installer?
Don't even know who that is.
High School Project.
Neither was after.
I'm sure it was the High School Project.
I remember calling it after. Let's call it.
Mr. President, thank you. I agree. I'm going to vote in favor of the transfer so we can pay our bills and not incur late fees or anything, but I, but I do want to encourage the mayor, and I'm sure that she would agree, to keep us involved in this as you uncover how we got to where we are, because I think that there's some, obviously, some failures there, and we want to avoid making them in the future.
Absolutely.
Is a motion to amend in order? Motion to amend? I, I think I want to go farther on this and authorize the transfer, but if we can add an amendment that actually does not admit liability, that's my concern. If we, if we don't amend this and we just authorize it without saying anything, we're admitting liability. I don't know who's responsible. All I know is we're not responsible. So whoever, National Grid will probably pass it off on the subcontractor. I don't want to give up on the $15,000, that's all. Yes, let's pay it, let's not incur the delay, but I really would like to amend this to confirm that we are not admitting liability for this error, and we're going to go after the liable party.
Second amendment. And discussion on the amendment? Let's go.
Thank you. I absolutely agree, and I think that the language, as it states, you know, not properly marked by this, out by the city, is making quite a statement, and perhaps we could adjust this language so that we're not necessarily saying, we didn't properly mark it. We don't know who didn't properly mark it.
Just for clarification, just for my clarification, systems in place in the future or now, when subcontractors are used, what are the systems in place for who's in charge of marking? The subcontractor to DigSafe or back to city, city to DigSafe?
Things are, every, when utilities are in the ground, when wires are in the ground, there is the responsibility of DPS to notify National Grid when there's upgrades or changes. There are parts of our infrastructure that we don't know about because they're so ancient, but as we uncover things, we certainly move them forward. Now, we are not being held liable. It's very clear that National Grid cut this wire, but because they followed protocol and did DigSafe, that's where, you know, but our insurance won't cover it because it's in the street.
Yep.
So we, you know, checked with MIA, and that's the problem we have. But it's not over yet, but I just, as I said, I just would like us to pay our bill, and I appreciate your comments, Counselor. Edgar.
Any comments on the amendment?
Well, I think we got a second on the amendment.
Any further comments?
No.
Or just, if I may, I mean, can we go, can we right here on the floor, strike that sentence that says was not properly marked by the city? Can we just, can we--
It's not properly marked.
Right. Can we just take that right out?
Yeah.
And, and pass it that way so that at least we're not--
Throwing the record.
Yeah. Would that work?
After the--
So an amendment that we, is that how we want to do this? Is an amendment to mark to strike that line? Is that all right?
What do you think? Amendment to the amendment to the amendment of the amendment?
I'm confused. Should I restate the amendment?
Yes. Should I restate the amendment? How's that?
You could have done this before. You should have, if you had a question, should have brought it up. Is that a wait till now? City clerk?
Yeah, I have, what I have written, maybe taking some license, is this is a motion to amend, to now approve without admitting liability by the city and striking the words from the transfer by the city. So it now reads, but was not properly marked out.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Someone going to make that amendment?
So moved.
Who makes it? The second? Second. Any further discussion on that amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second. It's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you, Counselors.
Okay, thank you. Communication three? Good job. There's less to that. Communication number three reads as follows. Memorandum to present members of city council from lease read dated September 23rd, recommendation to amend off-leash program. Please be advised that due to the number of persistent complaints that have come to the attention of Parks Commission since the inception of the off-leash program and that such conflicts are potentially harmful to the general public, the Parks Commission advises that, quote, "shared use," close quote, of Cashman Park is not working. Parks Commission voted at its September meeting to recommend elimination of Cashman Park as an off-leash location, and it is with that a one-page summary of off-leash complaints.
Mr. President, I move this to the committee on Neighborhoods and City Services.
Second.
In discussion? That's yours, then?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. We heard a number of comments tonight, as you know, and I was just jotting down kind of what they're all about. We heard about a breakdown in communication. We heard about proven kinds of fencing. We heard about improved signage of regulations. We heard about people versus dogs. We heard about ACO visit frequencies and reports, and we heard about user self-enforcement. Mr. President, all of those topics, we talked about, some of us talked about, two years ago, two and a half years ago, for many months, when creating this program initially and then for extending it. We talked about it a little bit earlier this year when we voted to extend it at March Lynn Mosley. It's not new to me. I'd like the committee to talk about this and why all of these issues are suddenly coming up again. Thanks.
Let's go.
Thank you, Mr. President. That would be fine. My suggestion was going to be, except it was a little slow off the mark, would be to refer to license and permits, and my rationale is, doesn't really belong in public safety, doesn't really belong in planning and development, even though it's a Parks issue. Neighborhood and City Services did deal with this a couple of years ago. We've got different counselors on there now. City Neighborhood Services also dealt with another recently controversial item, so I was thinking maybe we could spread the load. Plus, Chair Hartquist is not here, so I thought license and permits might be a good. She would not oppose that.
Let's call. Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Neighborhood and City Services would not be in the least bit offended if this proposal were amended and this subject sent to license and permits.
So where are we going now?
In that I'm on both. I'll take it either way.
There's no amendment, there's no motion, except to vote a, Neighborhood and City Services right now.
Mr. President? I would offer, fund the amendment and make this referral to the Committee on License and Permits.
So moved. Second. It would be either just to withdraw your first--
It would be on my first, and I'll suggest to remove this to license and permits. Thank you, Mr. President.
Second. Second. All in favor of, for inter-license and permits?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
This is the New Report Special Event. It's the River Relay for Real Lives. It is October 25th, 2014. It's the late file.
We're going to refer to public safety.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Close. Pointment second reading and reappointment second reading. Pointment second reading. First, Robert Pedalero, 1756th Street, Assistant Harbor Master and Special Police Officer until December 1st, 2017. There are two reappointments. Craig G. Holt, 33 Carter Street, Licensing Board, June 1st, 2020. And third, Lance Okel, 1885 Southeast Irwin Road, Port St. Lucia, Florida, Assistant Harbor Master, Special Police Officer, December 1st, 2017. Motion to approve. Second. Collectively? Collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Peter? You want to orders? Order number one. The city council accept with gratitude the gift in the amount of $15,000 from Storm Chemicals. Set in Melican Way, New Report, to be applied toward the purchase of two Scott Eagle Attack thermal imaging cameras for the New Report Fire Department to replace aging equipment. Submitted Councilor Charles F. Tontak. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Order number two. Order number two. That Ruriz Barker Street was accepted as a public way by order of the city-- To table? What's that, David? There's a motion? To table? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Order number three. City Council of the City of New Report appropriate $908,000 for the purchase of two fire trucks. Including all costs and sedentary related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor's authorized to borrow-- to borrow $908,000 under Chapter 44, 7, 9, or any other enabling authority. Mayor and the treasurer are authorized to take any other? Move to budget and finance. Necessary. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We go on to amendments. Amendment one.
Order one reads, Chapter 13, Section 13, 168, parking restricted on certain streets. No person shall park any vehicle on falling streets of portions, Olive Street on the easterly side from Merrimack Street running southerly for a distance of 40 feet. Submitted Councilor Robert.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Let's call it.
I urge your approval of this. I'm gonna give you a short, or a shorter history of this. Olive Street being of Verndaro Street, running from High Street to Merrimack Street, many residents brought concerns about the narrowness and especially the dangerousness at the corner of Merrimack Street to Olive Street to my attention. As a result of that, I refitted not only the neighborhood, but the surrounding streets, and held a neighborhood meeting. The meeting was held actually at the corner of Congress and Olive Street. We had numerous proposals in front of us. Some of them were one-way, partially one-way, restricted turns, and parking restrictions. After listening to everybody that was present, it was a unanimous decision that if one parking space were removed at the bottom of Olive Street, that the dangerousness of that street where it really chokes down would be greatly diminished. As a result of that, we also did put up some additional signage just to reinforce existing ordinances. Harold, who you heard from earlier tonight, had reached out to me and expressed basically what he said to you tonight, that he'd been there for many a year, and that he did have some customers that would park there that were handicapped. I said I'd work with him. One of the options was, of course, to try to create a handicap location directly in front of his store in a more safe environment than, than where it is. The second thing is he does have three off-street parking locations. Let me just reinforce that the street and all the residents on the street felt that this was a very, very important step forward. Another step that could be revisited if it was not workable or some other option came about. But at this point, this is what the entire neighborhood expressed to me, and this is what I'm expressing to my colleagues that are here tonight, so I'm urging that you vote in favor of this.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Motion approved, second reading, Olive Street. Counselor Hesorg?
Yes.
Monsa Kinsey?
Yes.
Monsa Tontar?
Yes.
Monsa Vogel?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Jinta?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
No.
Two noes, motion passes.
Amendment two.
Order number two. Is a zoning map change. Be amended to pursuant to 3D changes of zoning map such that the R3 zone between Route 1 and State Street is hereby changed to an R2 zone. Said area to include all such parcels of land so depicted on the attached map entitled Back Bay Neighborhood Zoning Change Proposed.
Motion to refer to planning and development, Senator?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We go on to committee items. Budget and finance.
Motion to remove item number seven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion? Monsa Tontar?
At our last meeting, we approved the firefighter's contract. In fiscal year 15 budget, the mayor had set aside contingency in anticipation of the contract being approved, and this shifts money from the contingency fund into the firefighter salaries, so budget financed, a move that we approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
Move to remove item eight?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
President, this is very similar to the last. It? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion, go ahead.
That's it.
You gonna express the motion?
Oh, motion to approve.
Mr. Cracker? Now the discussion?
You're up again.
You're up. Discussion?
You're up again.
Yeah, I get it, I get it. I already did.
I have to get it.
Very similar to the last motion. In that contract that we approved last time, EMT was slid into the contract, much more organized, and so this moves it into the salaries. We budget financed, move to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
No.
Join Ed?
Mr. President, just quickly, there's two topics of which you may have some interest in. Chapter 70, funding, the formula that's antiquated and needs to be discussed is in there, alluded to. If you want to be a little brought up to date, if you are unable to attend the meeting that was two weeks ago, we're going to be talking about it a bit at Joint Ed this coming Monday, as well, at the same exact time of day, there was a discussion of the Common Core, and that was at the Elks. And that is something we're gonna discuss at Joint Ed too. So if you want to get up to date and listen in the conversation, 5:30, Joint Ed at the high school, Monday. Thank you, sir.
License and permits? Neighborhood and City Services? Nothing to say. Planning and Development?
Nothing to report.
Public Safety?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove item two, handicap parking, Essex Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, we need roll call. Roll call.
Essex Street, one space to 26 Essex Street. It's a motion to approve. Monsa Hesorg?
Yes.
Monsa Kinsey?
Yes.
Monsa Tontar?
Yes.
Monsa Vogel?
Yes.
Monsa Cameron?
Yes.
Monsa Connell?
Yes.
Monsa Cronin?
Yes.
Monsa Agaman?
Yes.
Monsa Jinta?
Yes.
Monsa President O'Brien?
Yes.
Any else?
Yes, motion to remove item one, Franklin Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Could you read it, please?
No person shall park any vehicle on falling streets of portions, delete. This is on Franklin Street. Extent, no parking, westerly side of Franklin Street from the property line between 10 Franklin Street and 6 Franklin Street and running in a westerly direction to Water Street. Submitted jointly, counselors Tontar and Vogel.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Second.
Maybe the clerk can help me exactly where this should go, but the extent would be no parking on the westerly side of Franklin Street from Water Street for a distance of 100 feet.
100 feet?
That would be the motion.
Let me take a stab at it. No parking on the westerly side of Franklin Street from Water Street proceeding in a southerly direction for a distance of 100 feet.
Yep.
Monsa Cronin.
As we all know, this is going on for a little bit. What we have decided to try to achieve here is to retain as much parking as we can, but yet apply some relief to the affected neighbors. What this basically does is eliminate parking in front of most of 4 Franklin Street, which was one of the at issue. It also will hopefully assist the house across the street slightly in getting out of his driveway. It's a tough street. This is probably the best that we can come up with. Traffic Safety Advisory met extensively on this. Counselor Tontar was there. Counselor Vogel arrived towards the end of the discussion. We had incredible amount of input, photos, maps with circles and arrows and everything, and this is where I think we've landed.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Just, just to be clear, this reads now delete. It's not going to read delete, it's gonna read amend.
Yes.
As I had read.
Roll call. Counselor Hesorg?
Yes.
Monsa Kinsey?
Yes.
Monsa Tontar?
Yes.
Monsa Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Monsa Connell?
Yes.
Monsa Cronin?
Yes.
Monsa Agaman?
Yes.
Monsa Jinta?
Yes.
Monsa President O'Brien?
Yes.
Public Utilities? We've got it right this time.
Yes, Mr. President, just a real brief announcement regarding the item in committee regarding lights. The committee is holding a public hearing this Thursday night, October 2nd, at 7:00 PM, upstairs in the auditorium. The EAC has sent us a letter regarding 11 lights that it believes are on private property and the city is continuing to pay those for. Letters have been sent to the abuddies of those lights. I have received emails from many of those abuddies so far, and some will be attending Thursday night, and we hope to make a decision then. Thank you.
And for the good of the order?
Well, just may I, Mr. President, for a matter of housekeeping, would it be appropriate to remove those two items in the General Government Committee and move them to receive and file, just to clean up the agenda? So, motion to remove these from committee?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to receive and file board?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything else? For the order? Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Six, seven, eight.